Yes, yes, I, I did know that. Oh, really? Yeah, the way it falls, because the first is. Owls are kind of weird. They do follow you around. Hello, how are we?
Hello.
What? Um, yeah, that's, that's again. Oh, oral. I thought it was just a call from her and then I.
Don't worry about it.
Know what you're talking. I'm happy you like it. Like ice cream. And, and Dubry. Things though, it's more private. Vinnie is a little bougie. Hope it or cash? I was gonna say. Right. Oh, my God. No, I don't think we can last wait or a shirt. Nice. All right. I was like. Smile that come out. We were talking in your, your email. He's a great one to get a lot of feel. I don't even know what it means. I was not worried about it. We'll talk and I'll worry. The warmest thing that works. He's like already the wheel. That's the worst thing he can be. We lose, we die with that one pretty hard. He is like free and then they're. What's the money? There was no money. Allah. Yeah, that was. Will we tell you something? Were you getting left out? Everybody's on other emails. I was asking a website yesterday. Hi. How you doing? I'm good. You? For adapting my ease, so. A long story, best work over. Good now. Has your.
I've had it for a while.
Oh, everyone's, um. Three goal.
I don't.
Yeah, there's some playful stuff, but like. Figured it out. Yes, I'm always seeing you doing like. Let's do another one on Saturday if you want to come out. I've been thinking for them.
Right now.
I don't think you have to.
I don't know why I have.
I think. Well, yeah, it's true. We don't have. Yes, it was.
Everybody wants, everybody wants. I did that.
Go up. I don't care how many days, I was, I like knowing what it is, but. Yeah, I just. I, or.
Congratulations.
Um, yeah. So my way to get excited. But I'm sorry. Next season. I'm giving myself around. And I'm trying to do some things that I wish. Really fun. Check on those. Hey, that's why I did, that's why I didn't know more when you further in truth. That was why. How was this and what we got? The other thing. But that might be inherently or I have some quotes. All right. I love that. Yeah. I brought my. No, no, no. Yeah. I would say.
That's the school.
We got. Oh, we got.
Are you?
Other. Yes, hi. Sorry, I read the name. Well, I don't know. We talked. You know. That was. Just the one that I wanted back when I was like, I don't know. I'm not anybody wanting.
I should break him, please, sir.
You know. It's so that you can see the face of the commentators instead of just seeing them from the back. Yeah. That's the owl. So if you haven't done.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting to order. Welcome. Today is Wednesday, June fourteenth. It is seven P M. So we'll go ahead and get started. This is the Bangor School Committee Regular Meeting. Welcome to everyone in the room and welcome to those of you at home. And if you please, well, rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you. So first, we have recognitions of the Spring Track Girls State Championship Champions twenty twenty-three. Congratulations, Superintendent Tager.
Yes, it's my pleasure to say that the Bangor Schools Department and the Bangor School Committee will recognize the Class A Girls Spring Track State Champions for twenty twenty-three. This is their third year winning this recognition. We would also like to recognize Anna Connors for placing first at the New England Outdoor Track and Field Championship in the four hundred dash with a time of fifty-five point two five seconds. Like to bring up Coach Mosca to introduce the team and Mr. Butler, if you'd like to come up to Principal Butler. And we'll have all the athletes come up after you talk.
Thank you, Mr. Tager, School Committee, for having us here tonight. We celebrate our two thousand twenty-three Girls Class A State Title. I mentioned back in March, it's always good to see all of you. Or they get used a lot by coaches and they describe their team the word culture. Definition I found today is this: Culture has been called the way of life for an entire.
And I sound a lot better now. Culture has been called the way of life for an entire society. In our case, our society is our team. The way of life in our team is one where fun, hard work, toughness, and love is displayed on a daily basis. Fun: Seeing athletes show up before practice with smiles and laughter, teasing yours truly and other coaches on the staff, and just sitting in our track garage and socializing. Hard work: I wish you all could see this team practice. We have over a hundred athletes between the Boys and Girls Program. And it's a thing of beauty to watch in practice. We run, we sprint, we jump, we throw, and each and every day, we put forth our best effort to improve, not only as for themselves, but for their teammates. One of my favorite characteristics is toughness. Such elements as bad weather, outside commitments that might distract you from track and school, maybe a bad meet, injuries are all things that could, could derail an athlete and/or a team, not this team. We look at those as just a small hurdle to overcome, and we move on to the next chapter. And my favorite is love. These kids simply love each other. It's on full display from each practice and meet where they give each other encouragement during bus rides, during team dinners, and to functions outside of track, like this last Sunday in graduation, where our girls' distance team was by far the best cheering section in the cross center. We needed all these principles at the state championship in Mount Aira at on June third. Terms of toughness, I've coached track for over twenty years. It was the coldest state meet I've ever been a part of. Then it started to drizzle, and then it started to rain. Then we had a two-hour rain delay. When the announcement was made that the meet would resume, Coach Holyoke noticed that other teams were deflated, not us. Other teams wanted to go home. We wanted to get back out there and compete. Love: We ask the kids to stay positive. We ask the kids to just move forward. Any, anything that you can do, even if it's a small gesture, as a fist pump or a high five, would make a huge difference as we're overcoming the elements. Hard work: We had so many tremendous performances, not only at the state meet, but also at the New England Championship this past week. These athletes peaked at the right time, and that is a direct reflection to their hard work and dedication. As a result of that, we won, and we had a lot of fun at the end. It was so enjoyable to see the smiles on these kids, on these athletes after a state title win, to witness all the kids taking pictures with their friends and families and posing with a state championship trophy. And what will go down in program history is one of the best Taylor Swift sing-alongs on the bus ride home. The state title was won because these very talented athletes and the incredible culture that they have all created. As a result of that, there are twenty-nine teams in Class A. We're now the sixth team to have a three-peat since nineteen seventy-three. A quick shout-out definitely has to go to our parents. Other coaches have commented to me how lucky we are to have the support that we have from our parents at meets to help me in our home meets to help with officiating, and on a cold June Saturday morning cheering everybody on as we left from the Union Street Overpass. Thank you. To our administration, Dr. Butler for all your kind words at school, Dr. Harris Medberg for all your kind notes, Mr. Tager and Mrs. Tager for all your enthusiasm, not only to us, but every Bangor kid. Thank you very much. These last two were very near and dear to my heart. To Mr. Van Edestein for his unwavering support and creating the palace that we call home in Cameron Stadium. And I think a big shout-out goes to Joe Nelson, head of field maintenance. Anything I asked to help with the field and the track this year, Joe did with utmost enthusiasm. And if anybody went to the New England meet this past week, you could see the dream Mr. Van Edestein had and the efforts that Mr. Nelson do. It's unbelievable. To our coaches, Coaches Hackett, Huber, Johnson, Holyoke, and Lazard, you are all the best. Thank you for your tireless efforts and putting the best interest of the kids always first. And the last shout-out goes to the best group of them all, and that's to the athletes. Thank you for the memories on and off the track. Thank you for always willing to accept any challenge, and most importantly, thank you for the who you are as people. To our graduating seniors, I wish you nothing but the best of luck in your future. And like I told you the other night at the banquet, you are a ram for life. And for our underclass students, have a great summer, and we'll be back at it very, very soon. Congratulations. I will start out with some of our coaches. Some of our coaches are not in attendance tonight because of other commitments, but our first coach in attendance is Coach John Holyoke. Not in attendance, actually on his way to Oregon for Nike Nationals is Garrett Johnson. This coach has a meeting tonight for the town of Holden, Roger Huber. Other coaches, a commitment tonight, Dominic Lazott. But our coach in attendance here is Lindsey Hackett. We do have a lot of kids not here tonight just because of other commitments, but team member not present tonight, Ava Pelkey. Team member present, Bailey Friar. Madison McLean. Team member not present, Sophia Chase. Team member not present, Gabrielle Roy. Team member not present, Claire Oldenburg. Team member in attendance, Ava Cypher. Team member not present, Alexandra Collins. Not present, Maddie Ty. Not present. Jenna Alcott. Not present, Olivia Mitchell. Not present, Chase Smith. Present Hannah Noice. Not present Hannah Williams. In attendance, Emma Cypress. In attendance, Katie McCarthy. Not in attendance, Maddie Seer. Not in attendance, Callie Tennant. With us tonight is Olivia Schwartz. In attendance, Allison St. Peter. Uh, we're going on to our seniors now, and just one side note brag, I guess, for the seniors. This group will leave Bangor High School never losing a track meet in their career, indoor or outdoor. That is quite an impressive feat. Uh, senior not in attendance, Nora Marasco. Uh, Sophia Mazarelli.
She's a junior.
Anna Connors. Evelyn Humbert, not in attendance. Abby McDonald, not in attendance. Madison Tripp. Annika Noack. Samantha Erb. Julia Bassi. Taylor King. With us tonight, our lone senior, Sadie Harrow. And to round out our very talented senior class, Emma McNeil. Abby Quinn. And also recognition is Anna Connors for her placing first in their time in the four hundred with a time of fifty-five point two five. Anna Connors again.
Okay. Back to business, um, adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, E one, C two will be extra duty assignments.
Okay, can I get a motion, please? Any questions or comments on that? All in favor?
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. Next, we move on to public comments, and just as a reminder, I have to read this statement. Uh, members of the public may address the committee. For up to three minutes on school and education matters, public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief and not repetitive. The school committee's practice is not to respond or debate with speakers during the public comment period. We are here to listen. The superintendent or his staff will follow up on comments outside of the meeting as appropriate. The meeting, the committee, excuse me, will not permit profanity or shouting and request that the speakers be civil. Discussion of specific personnel or student matters and complaints concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed, but will be addressed through established policies and procedures. Before speaking, we encourage speakers to review school policy A C, which provides that the committee does not and will not discriminate nor tolerate discrimination against students or employees on the basis of membership in a protected class. Speakers who share comments contrary to this policy will not be allowed to continue. And before starting, please state your name and place of residence. And do we have any public comments tonight? Nope, seeing none. We'll move on to superintendent's proposals and updates. We have no action items, but several informational items, and the first is the diversity, equity, and inclusion in belonging, our D E I B report. Superintendent Tager.
Yes, Dana Carver-Bialer will provide a report on the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, Belonging Committee.
Hello, everyone. Mara, please feel free to interject at any point in time as you co-chaired this with me. Um, so my ask for today was to provide a brief update of, um, the initiatives and focus areas we've looked at this year around our diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. Um, goals, um, both generally and pertinent to our advisory committee. So, um, I don't know how to move that little guy. Oh, there we go. Um, so just for a brief overview, um, we focused this year, we shifted the format from monthly meetings to quarterly meetings with a little bit more time. And since we did so much work with, um, subcommittees, um, we sort of go back and forth, and we'll see where we land for next year. But, um, in lieu of subcommittees, we met together as a larger congregate group, which, um, was beneficial in some ways and more challenging in others. Um, where we seem to focus organically was around two predominant areas. So, um, focus on curriculum and classroom practices, um, and a larger interest in really thinking meaningfully around recruitment, hiring, and retention efforts um, to obtain a more diverse workforce within the school department. Um, additionally, we talked more about, um, my role and how it's evolved, which is an exciting and challenging thing that I knew stepping into a role that didn't previously exist. So that's sort of been an adaptive, ongoing conversation. Um, and how do we respond to community needs and national conversations? I know I'm not saying anything surprising in in this setting that all of the words within that D E I B title, um, are really hot button issues. So really figuring out how we both are informed by best practice and really establishing, um, leadership within this area has been an ongoing conversation. Um, finally, we worked on a few really specific deliverables, so really understanding, um, the need as we've seen so many ongoing instances of targeted violence um, or hate or discrimination that our students are listening. We all know what these things look like, and unfortunately, um, we're in the sad reality of if we responded with comments, um, or a public statement, every single time there was an act of violence, namely targeted violence, um, that would be nearly a daily occurrence in the United States. So um, instead, we work collaboratively as a committee to devise a statement that would be, um, if it's so moved by the school committee, um, displayed on the website, and I believe the correct verbiage is endorsed by the school committee and cosigned by the advisory committee, um, Superintendent Tager and Assistant Superintendent Dr. Harris Medberg. So, um, I'm presenting that to you for consideration. And finally, um, how do we move forward? So we've been informed by the phenomenal work around the University of Maine partnership and data accrued there. Um, so we really can think through moving this initiative forward, both in terms of our general culture as an organization and also with specialization, recognizing that each of these school communities has specific needs, both for their educator culture and for the students and families that they serve. Excuse me. Are we going to, there we go. So I believe this should be in your packets. Hopefully, if not, I will, of course, we're downloading. Hmm. Is that statement available in packets?
It's written as a letter from.
It's a PDF and it's cosigned.
It is in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see it.
What should I do? I have my laptop with me. Shall I add access? Or what's the preference? Do you want to distribute it afterwards? Of course I can do that.
Um, I can try to spin this one. I think there's not continuing to.
How about while we're working on this, I'll jump to the next thing. Go back to here. Okay. Should it be? How do I get out of here? I am, it's not doing anything.
It's this one you were.
It's in that tab next to the PowerPoint.
Correct.
Oh, there we go. Perfect. Well, this is probably not as helpful, um, looking at it on a screen.
Maybe if you just read it, are you comfortable?
Sure, I can read it squinting a little bit.
Um, so the Bangor School Department stands as a main department of education in the belief that it's our responsibility to both provide a safe and equitable place in which all students can thrive and where students are encouraged to examine their world, their beliefs, and their roles in society through multiple perspectives. All students, all families, and all human beings deserve to be celebrated, included in her. Words and actions that seek to make any group of people feel unsafe and or unwelcome have no place within our schools. One instance of intolerance is too many. Together, the Bangor School Department, students, educators, and staff are learning to better confront and challenge inequity, intolerance, and hate. Some of our ongoing efforts include with itemized topics, excuse me, prioritizing community safety and mental health support as paramount foundations upon which learning must be built. In-class experiences and specialized programming that highlight violence prevention, support tolerance, recognize the trees of inequality, and celebrate diverse cultures and identities. A decision-making process that draws from the collective knowledge and wisdom of our community. Through individual students, parents, and guardians and community members reaching out to Bangor School Department administrators and organized efforts to address community needs, including the D E I B Advisory Committee and Mental Health Advisory Committee. We lean on and are informed by the expertise of students, families, researchers, and community. Providing curricular resources and increased training and support for teachers as they are directly navigating these difficult conversations with students, taking feedback and listening to the most impacted communities and meeting needs with personalized support through research efforts, utilizing technology, including ZLM, the Bangor School Department app, and direct staff contact with students and their families. The Bangor School Department is determined to respond to the complexities of the human experience, both the great and the difficult, with values of belonging and a shared responsibility to honor human dignity through every step of the educational journey. In community with whomever you are most comfortable cosigning it.
So, um, that is a statement that we had worked on collectively. Um, I'm not exactly sure what the process looks like. It's not a policy being enacted. Um, so I don't know if this warrants an ongoing or outside conversation. Um, but we wanted to hand this off to you all. Is that a good place to to park that?
Kathy, do you have an opinion on that? Do we to put this on our website endorsed by the school committee and myself if there an agreement? Do we need to? We don't have to vote. Okay, thank you. I guess you just want to hear the school committee is in favor with posting it.
And I believe everybody here is in agreement. Almost anyone has any, any objections. But I think we, uh, we have spoken about this before, actually, in one of our retreats, and everybody was in agreement and full agreement.
Well, why don't I'll hand it off so you can look at it in fine print, and, um, we'll go from there. But thank you for the consideration. Um, next thing that we wanted to highlight was our in-service training, um, in March. Um, it was a really exciting day. I know some of you were present for it. Um, I gave a little snapshot on the right side of the screen. Um, it was a really unique opportunity because we brought all of the school community together. Um, so all staff, um, attended these, um, different sessions in the morning and then broke off into their own schools, and it was a really phenomenal opportunity for, um, exemplary leadership from our educators. So our teachers, um, those of whom participated in one of the University of Maine D E I courses co-facilitated the entire afternoon of programming with their building principals. Um, so it was a really great way to both have a unified approach forward, but also accounting for, um, the personalized different cultures of each school community. Um, so it culminated in. So it culminated in two different things on an individual level. It culminated in, um, every staff member completing an individual self-reflection. I had some of sort of the sample questions there. I will make sure that everyone has access to the slide deck, since you may not currently. So every individual staff member completed this individual self-reflection, including, um, mirroring Superintendent Taggert's sort of vision of this, the what are your steps forward, your equity steps forward? And then collaboratively as a school community, each, um, each staff team completed a building level, um, DEI step forward, um, where it was really good opportunity for self-reflection on what are our strengths, what are our challenges and what are those steps forward? And really getting into the granular level. So it's one thing to say a space where everyone feels respected and that's lovely. And I agree with that sentiment, but digging a little bit deeper, deeper, what's measurable? What's empiricized? What's, um, reflective of the needs here? What does that actually look like in practice? So that was a really exciting sort of way to propel the work forward. It was deeply informed by the data collection, um, that, um, Dr. Bannon really shepherded with the University of Maine faculty member. I mean, it really gave us an opportunity to look at the data and data speaks volumes more than anecdotes sometimes. So it really gave an opportunity to get into, um, be below the surface of this kind of work. So what does this look like and what does this mean? I don't want to overtalk all of this, but I'm happy to sort of let this be a jumping off point for future conversations, either within questions today or conversations in the future. But really, again, seeking to make decisions based on the data, building meaningful relationships, really emphasizing the meaningful piece, both across Maine and within these national conversations. I think a critical part of DEIB work, while the DEI thing is frequently just sort of thrown onto everything, have it be sensitive to space and place and really give not just students, but educators, the ability to, um, reflect the gaps, reflect answering, um, solutions to those gaps, both here and now. Um, so really being able to look at what's going, going on as a global citizen and really answering the, the challenges and the opportunities within our community. So how do we do that? Look at the data, we center student voices, we respond to community needs. Um, and how do we adapt to, um, all of this work? And how do we lead as a school department in this work? When this work is challenging and we see both in the formality of policy and law and also, um, the court of public opinion and headlines. This work is endlessly evolving, um, and playing out on a public stage. So how do we really position ourselves to address things? Not only, I mean, most importantly, to do best by our students in the community and additionally to really, um, be a part of these conversations. And this work has during my short time here evolved into communicating, um, with Superintendent Taggert, with our chair, um, conversations literally in every corner of the state. And it's been a really exciting, overwhelming and wonderful opportunity all at once. So how do we operationalize this into the next steps? The most obvious that I could point to is, um, the ongoing recruitment, hiring, retention. And I purposely couple those three things as one, because if we're really strong in recruitment or hiring or retention, but not the other two, I think it's, it's a dropping of the ball situation. So, um, this summer we are working, um, with efforts led by, um, how, um, not council members, school committee members, red and, um, as DEIB Advisory Committee member, to really spearhead our recruitment, hiring and retention efforts, um, with a few workshops over the summer and other community members and members of the DEIB committee are, um, spearheading that with us. So really being able to drive that forward and have that turn into, um, a strategic plan to really put into place in 2024 for the 2024, 25 academic year. So that's sort of the, where my head is most clearly at. Additionally, we know that there are again, pretty significant changes coming to Title IX regulations and implementation, unfortunately, um, to be formally presented in October with expectation of implementation in December, not really ideal for academic year planning. But those again are things that we'll adapt and change to also recognizing that the team I've worked with, with, um, Principal Silicon, Principal Bannon, um, phasing out, it'll just be an ongoing conversation, but one that I'm excited for and ready for. So with that, um, I've asked, um, our wonderful principals to help me in sharing sort of those next steps forward with all of you, school by school. So, um, can I ask each of you, I guess we'll go in order from Abraham Lincoln down to the Bangor Regional Program. If each person is comfortable coming up and sharing your plans, that would be wonderful. Can we please start with you? Thank you.
Good evening. Um, we had a great conversation at Abe Lincoln about how we can best support students and created some goals. So the first goal, um, was to increase outside experiences for students, um, to provide some continuity for them, um, by having field trips and in-school presentations, at least two for every student, um, each year. So we will start that goal next year. Um, we're going to incorporate an annual school spirit kindness week, um, so that we focus on our community and supporting one another. Um, and then our third goal is that all classroom teachers are going to complete a classroom library equity audit, um, from seed the way in the form of a checklist, so that we're making sure that all of our students, as our population changes, are recognized and represented in their classroom libraries.
Good evening. Um, the Downey School developed four goals to address, um, the needs. And based on the data that was presented at the March in-service, uh, day, we are looking to increase celebrations for students, parents and staff throughout the school year, or you're planning to increase, uh, information provided to parents, uh, specifically around the PBIS implementation, um, and work to have more parent involvement. We are looking to create a schedule for the 23-24 school year that provides more opportunity for inclusion services, including Title I and, um, special ed services. And then we're looking to provide more opportunities for experiential learning for students in the 23-24 school year.
Good evening. So we focused on thinking about, uh, before school, during school and after school. And what really thought about was offering, um, academic support for students, like homework club, either before school or after school, for some of our students who may not have that consistent support at home. The second piece being having community members come into the school, uh, in offer to share their diverse backgrounds and experiences. We had some opportunities for that this year that were really powerful with the kids. And the last being that, um, inviting mentors, high school students, college students. We talked about the JROTC at Bangor High School to come in and work with our students, um, on a relationship basis to, um, provide emotional academic support for the students at the 14th Street School.
Good evening. I guess I'm the oldest one because I have put my glasses on. We had great conversations at the Fruit Street School. One area where we want to increase more community school involvement and one way we're going to do that is through student survey, which will be concluded in the fall, so we can add that. Another one through the work of P, PBIS. Each classroom will have an area in the classroom, a calm corner, so to speak, where students who are starting to feel frustrated or anxious are able to access that and really taking a look at their emotional and social needs. And then finally, a hundred percent of the classrooms and students will be participating in an international ac-academic showcase in March. We started it this year, but we want to beef it up and really have all those students feel that sense of belonging. So, thank you.
First of all, I want to thank you for inviting me to speak on my very last night at the Bangor School Department. There's no place I'd rather be. The Vine Street School is a really special place to, uh, grow and learn. And so we really wanted to recognize our children and work, uh, build on the work of PBIS by having a school-wide recognition for showing expected behaviors so that every child had a chance to be recognized. So we worked with our PTO to create a logo. Thank you to Mike Chandra, Yimka's husband, create us a logo. We have stickers and staff give out stickers whenever children do something really spectacular and it's a moment of pride for the children. Everybody knows to stop them, ask them what they did. So we're labeling the behavior. We also send postcards home to parents, which they have really, really enjoyed. Our second goal was we really wanted to get into the data. I love to look at data and we found our data was pretty dirty when it came to, um, discipline. So some teachers reported more, some didn't, some did a major for this, minor for that. So we're working to standardize our language and our, um, reporting so that we can use that data or someone else can use that data. And finally, uh, we'll have a world culture day, um, similar to what Principal Fornier was just talking about. We've done it for two years. It grows every year. And we also do it in conjunction with academic showcase. And we've set up a committee to start that for next year. PTO is already involved in that as well, and we're hoping to expand it for next year.
Good evening. Um, as you know, Fairmount does a great deal of looping. So our first goal is to increase that. So the majority of Fairmount classroom teachers will be changing grade levels in the next school year to support looping. Looping is when a class stays with the same teacher and advances a grade. Teachers look forward to this opportunity because of the many benefits that exist for students. The benefits of looping include reduced apprehension to start of the new school year, increased continuity, more in-depth relationships with the teacher and classmates. Research has shown that long-term relationships established through looping support student learning in a variety of ways. Our second goal is to get back to individual goal setting. So all students will have measurable individual goals. They'll be with the support and guidance of their teachers. These goals will be monitored, adjusted as needed and celebrated when attained. And mentoring in 23-24 mentoring time will be expanded to allow staff members to work with students on SEL instruction, individual goal support, providing opportunities for academic acceleration. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm Dan Chadwin. I'm the principal at the Mary Snow School. We had a great professional there all the day in March and we just hit the ground running. At Mary Snow, one of, uh, after the conversations that we all had and we looked at our survey data, we thought that it would be really wise for us to really start, um, self-reflecting on our intentional language in the classroom and around the school and common language across the board. So we kind of coupled that with PBIS and, uh, you know, is that's a three to five-year implementation process? That's where we kind of began. We then were fortunate enough to have a, uh, very special guest join us for, uh, a DEIB, uh, training at one of our staff meetings. And, um, we're hopeful that that will continue. We're going to commit some staff time to that. Uh, one of those, one of the outcomes from that meeting was, um, not just questions and tough conversations about how we actually interact with students and what we say, but, um, kind of the, the onset of like role playing so that we can see how we're acting, you know, live with each other and be critical of each other in a safe and comfortable environment. So that's our first goal. Our second goal, uh, was to create more interactive displays around the school to promote a sense of belonging for all students. We really brought in our student council and different student groups to play a role in this. So they had a voice in exactly what we were going to start doing. I was really proud of our student council this year because they decided to buy, um, different flags from different countries. So we can represent more than, than just the United States, because in our school that is definitely represented more than just the United States. So hanging across the Mary Snow School walls are different, or several flags from different countries. And that's obviously ongoing. Another piece to the second goal that was, uh, not intentional in the March in-service day that we did that, that came out of it though, was the student group came to me and asked if we could start a world language club. So we connected with, um, the AP classes at the high school. And for six to eight weeks, we had high school students in AP languages come down and, uh, have an after-school activity or a community school activity where we, uh, introduced all our little fourth and fifth graders to a variety of languages that we speak. And it was just absolutely wonderful. Our third goal, uh, was really fantastic. In May, we started this, um, Communities Connection Day. Actually, Mrs. Rowe really led this for us, um, where we brought in over 20 people from the Bangor community to expose the students to different things that we do. I mean, it was all the way from beekeeping to the, uh, Chinese school to, um, yoga. It was just a phenomenal day for our kids to actually see what the adults in their community does, right? And how they contribute to the diverse culture that we have in Bangor. And that's now going to be an ongoing thing that we're going to do at the end of May. Uh, we solicited feedback from the members that joined us to like, what could we do better? Where, you know, would things that we could, uh, include that would represent more of the diverse population in Bangor? And we're going to take that information and start running with it for next year. Okay, thank you. Yeah, you can clap. It's okay.
Good evening, everyone. We had a great conversation in March at Doughty. Uh, we're going to focus on three areas. We'd like to look at our actual structure of our day, the student support time during the day and increase the opportunity for targeted interventions by 10%. We'd also like to, uh, further establish mentoring within the building and increase the amount of one-to-one mentoring relationships by 20% in the enrollment. Uh, and finally, like many people have said, we want families back in the building. We'd like to increase the number of opportunities for families to be active participants and what's going on at Doughty by 50%. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's always a pleasure not to follow Mr. Chadwin. Good evening, Mr. Tager, Chair Hassan and members of the, of the committee. We had, like the other schools, had a great conversation, uh, around this topic in March and, and generate, generate three goals, uh, that really follow along with the language in the strategic plan, which is success begins with personalized connections. That's what we're all talking about here tonight. So goal one for Willie Miss Cohen School is by June 2024, uh, the Cohen School will establish an internal mentoring program to welcome and support new multilingual students enrolling in the Cohen School community as measured by mentor mentee participation numbers and sessions. We're excited about that. Um, and those meaningful relationships, the words Dana used just a few moments ago, again, to connect students to school. Uh, we want to in October, September, October, begin to create and use a more detailed system to track, uh, student participation in before and after school activities. It's something that means a lot to all of us and all the schools, particularly Cohen. Uh, we want, we want to do a better job of really tracking that and connecting students. And that will be measured by quarterly summary reports. And then secondly, to use, uh, by June 2024, we will incentivize and recognize, uh, students for their participation in before and after school activities through the use of that tracking system that we're going to develop as measured by student recognitions, uh, at the conclusion of each semester. So we want to ramp that up to really have students have those meaningful connections to school. So thank you for your time tonight.
Hello, thank you. Uh, similar process, Eva Wagner, our rep to the, um, led the faculty meeting with remarkable confidence and ease. It was, uh, people were really, uh, in tune to how she framed things. And that was a wise decision to have a faculty member be the one that, that framed things for our group. Lots of conversations, high school is a big place. We, uh, divide up across content areas, did some mixing up that we probably don't do enough of. And on the other side of it, it's, um, it's really clear that like, I think, um, you hear in a lot of the other plans, uh, our plans around the EIB really get back to, and, uh, overall school function, get back to fundamentals. And we've implemented, um, a, uh, we're in year one of PBIS. We hit the brakes in some ways, uh, but have sped ahead in ways that frame the substance of our first set of four, really four functional goals around the EIB. Back to fundamentals, first goal is, uh, by June now, this work's completed, the academic and behavioral expectations, um, that are reflected on our school-wide rubric will be revised to align with the PBIS framework. So we started this work last summer. We've developed a theme that corresponds to RAMS, Rams. Uh, we have a simple, uh, graphic that communicates the overarching expectations for, uh, you know, respect for self and others, accountability for time, place and learning, making connections and then solving problems responsibly. And, uh, the framework, it's really common sense stuff. And as we unpack it as a faculty, it makes a ton of sense. If you want to see behaviors change, you reteach, reteach. There's a, there's a recognition, there's a sanction component to that. But it starts with everybody getting back to basics, day one, communicating what the expectations are within the classroom, within that framework, and all the other places that they interact and experience, school hallways, before school, after school. What do those behaviors look like? We need to reteach, need to reinforce and make. We need to reteach, need to reinforce and make that a concerted effort. So we've got those rubrics drafted. Uh they'll be part of course documents beginning in the fall, course uh descriptions, and they'll tie into our feedback loop, which goes in report cards quarterly. Uh you've been uh unless you've been a high school parent, you've probably not seen the report card that gives the quarterly uh feedback, engagement, cooperation, habits of work. We need to take that, what can be, if you look at the surface features, fairly complicated sets of group uh grids with indicators, and puts them into a holistic four-point rating on whether or not those behaviors are shown in the day in and day out across learning spaces. So it's really intuitive stuff. You tell what you like to see. You uh address things when the behaviors aren't where they're supposed to be. You support, you reteach, and we need to get on the same page across the faculty with those things. We've made that a priority. We've drafted those rubrics. We've got some calibration work to do. So that's goal one. That, or let's go one and two. By September, we want all of those revised rubrics, the matrices for behaviors, the things that we're going to discreetly teach and reinforce to be part of course documents that are covered in every classroom every day. So it's uh clear how what the cultural norms are and what the uh sort of uh way that we expect kids uh and adults to interact with another throughout the day. Uh we are working through um a way to embed credit recovery intervention and extension within the school day. It's not it's not uncomplicated work. It sounds easy. The concept's easy. We have them during the day. We need to find opportunities to uh to uh intervene. Uh we have an SST process. That's a student study team that's broken up by grade level where we look at the data broadly. We have cut points. We have mid-quarter, end of quarter. Oh, uh holistic progress toward graduation credits, course, specific course requirements that that team comes together weekly to look at grade levels. And we need the uh reliable mechanism for the data that's emerging uh to be responded to more timely. Uh third is goes around uh in a lot of ways, getting kids to reengage. Uh we've seen good evidence that people are re-engaging, but we need to get back to the expectation that we and we engage students. So it's almost the way I think of it is, it's it's solving the issue with attendance in uh in the most positive way possible. Hold ourselves accountable to connecting kids to things that have meaning to them and value to them beyond their classes. Classes are enough for some, but for many students and the ones that might be showing up as trailing the play a little bit in terms of academic performance developing and over time that they need something that they connect to at the school, many of those things uh occur after school. Not all of them, and we have just as many clubs, activities uh as we've ever had. It fall into categories that appeal to most students and we create ones that don't exist. So our goal, we set progressive goals by quarter of the number of students that we're documenting and holding ourselves accountable, recruiting, engaging in those activities that put them in uh with others that um in in doing things that are in a sense bigger than themselves in 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 red school. So we've got a good set of goals, confident in them, and the work is uh in the right direction.
We're all very prepared to make sure we're adequately representing the Bangor Regional Program. Um Director Mayo sends his apologies for not being able to attend. He had a family um arrangement he had to attend to, uh but he did provide both of us with his goals. Um so I'm happy to share them. First was by May first, twenty-twenty-three, one hundred percent of teachers will send home resources um available um to support families and students within packets to one hundred percent of students. New students that begin at the Bangor Regional Program after May first um will be given packets on their first day. Um next, seventy-five percent of teachers will have positive contact with seventy-five percent of their students, um families or guardians on a weekly basis as measured by weekly contact logs. Um and finally, seventy-five percent of students will participate in bi-weekly club days. So activities that are typical for after-school activities that cannot typically be accessed by Bangor Regional Program students for the remainder of the school year.
Is that consistent with what you had?
Wonderful. So that is what I have. And then, as always, please reach out any time. It's a pleasure working with all these folks behind me and all of you. And I think as we sort of see this work evolve, um it it's an exciting journey to be on. So thank you all for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions now or later.
Any questions? A member, Mundell.
Yeah, it's more of a comment. Um I really love the way that you've broken it down to each school and um taking into account each school's, you know, different culture and and needs um of that population. And I I just, I really love the buy-in at the at the school level. Um and I'm really impressed with everything you've accomplished this year. So good work.
Thank you.
I also wanted to say I had the opportunity to attend the um the parent program or the parent guardian family program at Bangor High School for parents of LGBTQ plus kids. And I told you this personally, and I told uh Superintendent Tager, but I just wanted to say publicly what an incredible program that was.
Thank you.
The students, there were several student representatives who um told their stories and were very open and incredibly knowledgeable and articulate and open about um just feeling comfortable talking about it in the school setting showed me how much progress we've made. And um it was just fantastic to see.
Thank you.
My first child attended, who graduated two years ago, and she's like, wow, we should take this to my college. So and her college already does a lot of this stuff. So she was impressed.
Setting good practice for NYU. I will rest my head soundly tonight. I'll take it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All you've done.
To put that in a bit of context, um we received a really generous grant from the Nellie Mae Education Foundation um that is allocated to supporting and empowering LGBTQ plus identified students in Bangor High School. So it's specific to Bangor High School. That culminated in a four-event series that we're also able to carry that funding into the first half of next school year. Um so we've had a a series of workshops, student panels that were um entirely devised by our six student leaders, who were also able to generously compensate, which is a really exciting and rare opportunity that we have in the DEIB world. Um and the event that um you referred to was a really exciting, brave event entirely devised by our students to have an informational, educational, and support-based event for parents of parents and guardians of LGBTQ identified students. So we provided um a flyer and students um self-referred their adults to attend this event. Um and it, we had a panel of students that were willing to share their experiences and a few community leaders, including the deputy commissioner from the Maine Human Rights Commission. So it was a really exciting event that would not have been possible without the innovation of students and particularly in this time and space and day. Um the steadfast support of Superintendent Tager and Principal Butler. So it was really exciting. It I, something I not just to plant that seed, hope to see it evolve and and grow in the future.
Remember John Drow was next, and I remember.
And this is also more of a comment than a question, but I just wanted to say thank you to all of the principals for taking time to be here. Um I know not everybody loves to stand up and give kind of a rundown what's happening, but if anybody else noticed, we've laughed more together as a group than we have since I've been on this committee. And when we can show the greater community that we're engaged with one another and we can hear what you're doing, I feel like that really works towards the goals of DEIB. So I loved hearing from all of you, and I'm not sure what the plan is. You know, don't I'm going to hide a little bit, but I hope we do this more frequently, um where we hear from you about where these programs and plans are going over the next year, even though I know it's not everybody's favorite. Maybe we'll add in that round of applause somewhere in there for you.
Uh member Saret was next.
Yeah, I just also have a comment. I just, I want to thank you for this report, and it's, it's just been a a great privilege of mine to work uh with you uh this year on the DEIB committee, learning alongside and from you um and all the the content area experts uh within the committee. And it was really nice to see, as it's already been mentioned, sort of that work that's been going on behind the scenes uh with you and the principals and and hear about all that. Um that was really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? No, and I too, I wanted to thank all the principals. That was wonderful. I had um, you know, gone over a report uh with Superintendent Tager, but just to hear it firsthand from all of you was really, really special. Um as a a personal note of in as a parent and community member from away, this is exactly why we chose Bangor as our home and why we've been here for over almost twenty years now. And so this is exactly the kind of work um that Dana and I, Superintendent Tager and the school committee members wish to show the entire community that this is again, not about politics or one side or the other. Let's leave that out of that. Let's really show the humanity in all of this work and the compassion and empathy. Many of you talked about um community building and that those connections and that sense of belonging, and that's what our students are feeling. And and this is what I'm hearing from community members through the cultural events and the, I remember it was the um the cultural day, I think it was, some of the events in Fruit Street and Vine Street, and also the Career Day. That those are special events, and those are memorable memorable moments that this, our students and our families will carry on forever. So thank you for doing this work and please um, you know, dig your heels in with us because this is really, really important. So thank you. Thank you, Dana. I appreciate it. Okay, and with that, we move on to a report of re-assignments for school year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four.
Yes, Chair Austin, I am reporting the following teacher reassignments for the school year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Nathaniel Colby from grade K-eight Special Education Teacher at Bangor Regional Program to grade ninth through twelve Special Education Teacher at Bangor Regional Program. Joe Clark from Joy Clark from grade three teacher at Vine Street School to grade two teacher at Vine Street School. Jenna Bishop from grade one teacher at Vine Street School to kindergarten teacher at Vine Street School. Ruth Gannell from grade six teacher at William S. Cohen School to grade seven ELA teacher at William S. Cohen School. Rebecca Rowe from grade five teacher at Mary Snow School to multilingual teacher district-wide. Melissa Bartholomew from speech-language pathologist at James F. Doughty School to speech-language pathologist at Fruit Street School. Lori Marshawn from Special Education Teacher at James F. Doughty School to grade seven, eight Special Education Teacher at Bangor Regional Program. Samuel Picard from Research Teacher at William S. Cohen School to point-five Resource Teacher and point-five Aspirations Program Teacher at William S. Cohen School. Jeremy Dubois from Resource Teacher at William S. Cohen School to point-five Research Room Teacher and point-five Aspirations Program Teacher at William S. Cohen School. Daniel Konstantin from Special Education Teacher at James F. Doughty School to Special Education Teacher at Bangor High School.
Thank you. Uh next, we have report of resignations.
I'm reporting the following resignation. Zachary Finney, Physical Education Teacher, Fourteenth Street Vine, Bangor Regional Program. Shannon Shook, Special Education Teacher, Abraham Lincoln School. Zachary Finney, Boysby Soccer Coach, James F. Doughty School. Jamison Plow, JV Girls Soccer, Bangor High School. Joshua Johnson, Chorus, James F. Doughty School. Laura Charette, point-five IEP Coordinator, Bangor Regional Program. Scott Clement, AP Coordinator, Bangor High School. Melissa Bartholomew, point-eight-eight IEP Coordinator, James F. Doughty School. Melissa Bartholomew, point-five Student Council, James F. Doughty School. Melissa Bartholomew, Team Leader, Special Ed, James F. Doughty School. And Allison Sanderson, School Nurse, James F. Doughty School.
Thank you so much. Next, we move on to business action items. And we have the minutes for the regular meeting of May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three.
I'm recommending approval of the draft minutes of the May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three Regular School Committee Meeting.
Can I get a motion, please? And um do we, we have one abstention, um all in favor.
Passes six-zero. Thank you.
Next, we have um financial reports for April twenty-twenty-three Financial Report.
I'm recommending approval of the April twenty-twenty-three Financial Report.
Motion, please. Any questions or comments? All in favor.
Passes seven-zero. Thank you.
Next, we have uh personnel and we have nominations of an administrator.
I'm recommending the following administrator nominations for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year with a one-year probationary contract. Deborah Swett, Principal, Vine Street School, and she is present, sitting right back by Lynn Silk.
Congratulations. Oh, well, first of all. Put the car before the horse. I'm sorry. Any questions or comments? Or a motion, please. Now I got myself all out of order. Motion, please. So moved. Questions or comments? No, all in face.
Sure, that'd be. Yeah, you can. Come on up there.
Put her on the spot.
I know. I guess I have to get used to this, right? Correct? So I I am Deborah Swett. Um I'm currently a literacy coach here in Bangor, and I've been here for nine years. And I am thrilled and excited to have this opportunity to lead lead the Vine Street School community. So I live in Holden. I have husb-, I have two kids. I don't know how much you want to know about. But I'm sure we'll get to know each other over the next few years. Thank you.
Yeah, that's excellent. All in favor.
Passes seven-zero.
Now official congratulations. And we move on to nominations of a teacher.
Thank you, Chair. I'm recommending the following teacher nominations for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year with a one-year probationary contract. Kathleen Maxon, grade four teacher, Mary Snow School. Chelsea Kirk, grade six teacher, William S. Cohen School. Christie Raymond, grade two teacher, Downey School. Joseph Haskins, grade seven, eight Social Studies Teacher, James F. Doughty School. Stephen Early, Science Teacher, William S. Cohen School. Lily Lovett, Occupational Therapist, Downey School. Carrie Phipps, Science Teacher, Bangor High School.
Motion, please. Any questions or comments? All in favor.
Passes seven-zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have donations by member Saret.
We had, we have an addition if you don't mind.
Yes. Oh, next we have extra duty assignments. I don't have that on here.
Yep, this was our addition um that we added. I'm recommending committee approval of extra duty assignments for the school year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Cassandra Acevedo, point-five IEP Coordinator, Fruit Street School. Melissa Bartholomew, point-five IEP Coordinator, Fruit Street School. Emma Rappaport, point-five IEP Coordinator, Fruit Street School. Chelsea Low, point-five Civil Rights Advisor, James F. Doughty School. Bailey Edward, point-five Civil Rights Advisor, James F. Doughty School. And Christopher Packard, Seed Advisor, Bangor High School.
Can I get a motion, please? Any questions or comments? Member Saret.
I was just curious what a seed advisor was. I hadn't seen that before.
Well, it has an ominous acronym. Uh it's a day, it predates my town high school twenty years or so. It's a the, it's an acronym for Students Ending Environmental Destruction. Uh but it's a a group that uh is very much student-led facilitated by now Chris have uh approved and uh it's uh raises awareness and also undertakes initiatives within and beyond the building to uh awareness of negative impact, environmental impacts in opera, in opportunities and actions that can be undertaken in the school to offset environmental impacts.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor.
Passes seven-zero.
And now we move on to donations by member Saret.
To Downey School from Angelo's Pizza for Teacher Appreciation Week, having a total dollar value of two hundred. To Downey School from Carmel Union Congregational Church Lunch for Teacher Appreciation Week, having a total dollar value of one hundred. To the James F. Doughty School from George and Mary Wright, a cash donation to support students, having a total dollar value of two hundred and fifty. To William S. Cohen School from Beth and Art Quatritis, a cash donation to support students, having a total dollar value of two hundred and fifty. To William S. Cohen from the Wiley Family and Wiley Law Offices, a cash donation to support students attending the dance, having a total dollar value of fifteen hundred.
Thank you so much. And I'm going to get a motion. Any questions?
Passes seven-zero.
Much gratitude. Okay, and then next we have introduction items. We have first reading of several revised policies and may we take them all together?
Sure. Revised Policy GBEA, Bloodborne Pathogens. Revised Policy GBEB, Staff Conduct with Students. Revised Policy Revised Policy G B G B, Workplace Bullying. Revised Policy G B I, Staff Gifts and Solicitations. Revised Policy G B J, Personal Rec-, Personnel Records and Files. Revised Policy G C B C C, Tax Sheltered Annuities. Revised Policy I C A twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four School Calendar.
Any questions or comments on any other policy? All in favor.
Passes seven zero.
Next, we move on to committee updates. Do we have any comments and or questions from?
Only just to reiterate the thanks, all the principals for being here tonight. Obviously, the last day of school in Bangor today, so I'm sure that that took a lot of energy and effort as well as just to make it to this point in the year. So appreciate seeing you all. My wife and I did have bets on whether Dr. Bannon would be here and I said yes, and she said no, so. Testament to your professionalism and integrity and Mrs. Silk as well to be here, uh, even though you're on to different, on to different paths. So as I said before, you will both be missed, but congratulations on making it through the school year and thank you again for all your efforts.
I just had a quick one. Um, earlier this year, I know one of the capital improvement things that we're working on is uh, some addition to Fruit Street School. And I didn't not believe Mr. Fornier when he said like they would be starting on it at the end of the day today, but they legitimately were unboxing. Like I took pictures as dudes were putting on like vests and getting things out of a truck to start as we were leaving the parking lot. So well done. I have never seen a project start on time. That is impressive.
Questions or comments? Um, and I did want to ask Superintendent Tager if uh, you could give us a, a quick update on the safety protocol.
Yes, yes, we had a number of public comments at our last meeting, so I did want to share with the committee um, the result of some of those conversations. Principal Butler, Ray Finney and I, between the three of us and we tag teamed some of this, we um, met with the students that spoke before you, um, who also brought three faculty members with them. So that was three additional people that were spoken with. Um, the parents came in, Principal Butler and I met with parents. Uh, and we're, I, first of all, I told them that we are grateful for their feedback. And I kind of want to just give you what the concerns were and then what some positives were or some steps forward. So the concerns that we heard across um, a small group of students, faculty members and parents. Uh, the intercom loudness level in public areas was a concern with the lockdown that we had uh, at the high school. Rumors uh, were going, there were some students running around the building. So there was a rumor that somebody was trampled, which was not true, but rumors circulate when things happen like that event. Um, there were concerns about training and preparedness. Um, concerns about um, windows and doors in classrooms. Were they working? Um, communication timeline with, with parents and of course, everybody wants um, instant communication. So that was a concern that we heard. And the review the locks to be sure they're all working and complete repairs quickly. So all these concerns are, are good and we appreciate the feedback and to create a plan to be sure um, all locks are locked. And that was a fairly um, easy fix. The, one of the folks that came in spoke about students went into a room and it wasn't locked. That's a room where we have a part-time teacher. And so somebody else opens that door for them each day. So from here on out, they'll open that door when they get there and they'll be able to lock that door off. So that was an easy fix. We were able to share that with the parent that brought that concern forward. Um, good things that we heard from that group and a couple of things that are moving forward. Um, we are looking at replacing intercom. Some of them are outdated. So Jerry's working on that with, with Abe, looking at our facilities. And once again, this was um, we talk about security. We worry about all of our schools, all thirty-five, thirty-five hundred students. So this was an incident at the high school that we were able to learn from. But just to kind of give you a contrast, uh, and I know one of our school committee members was at Vine when they had a drill. And you could hear very well from the intercom. And it was kind of a soothing recording voice, which is good for our special needs students too. So there's a lot of ways to look at this, but we are looking at replacing intercoms that could not be heard. Uh, we are inventorying, we, inventory of doors is completed. And we've communicated with the fire department regarding those protocols too. So they've come out and looked at our doors and they could explain where the lock should be. So we are under code. Uh, we're looking to, always looking to streamline our communications and timeliness. I mean, you all made the decision to hire uh, Ray who does all of our communications. So we'll keep looking to get better at our communications and the speed of them. Students uh, would like a debriefing meeting. I thought that was an interesting and a, and a good thing the students brought up. Uh, other good things that we heard, students would like to be able to give feedback on a wider scale. So maybe a survey and advisory. Um, also, I don't know if you're aware of it, um, Principal Butler set me up with a conversation council. So I meet with eight students every other month, just to kind of hear what their concerns are. So we could talk about safety throughout the year with those eight students too. Um, students asked for more training for them. Students asked for training to become part of a new student orientation. We thought that was a good idea. Uh, I want to say a very positive was the police E M T and fire department's response was very good and very quick. Uh, you would want to know that our S R O heard the alert immediately and reacted immediately and he was on the campus. So we had a reaction within less than a minute. Uh, the alert system did work, other than there was an issue with the intercom volume. The parent and the students were happy to hear that the high school has a fourteen-person security team. So we do have a group that works on this at all the schools. I think you probably have the biggest team, but all the teams have a team that works on security for us. Another addition I wanted to add, and I had spoken with the principals at, at our last administrative council meeting. September, we'll plan on doing a, a lockdown drill at all the schools that will be announced. So the first four weeks of school. And then Ray and I are going to come out in the first quarter and do an unannounced lockdown. We'll tell them that it's happening, but we're not going to tell them when. And then we'll do a debrief like a tabletop at the schools afterwards. So it's a priority. We, we do appreciate the information I wanted to share back with you that we did speak to all the folks that were speaking to us. Is there anything you want to add, Principal Butler? Okay.
I'm sorry, could you clarify on the unannounced drill? What, what is that going to look like?
Two things we're going to do the beginning of the year, and this kind of came from recommendations from the students, faculty and parents that we spoke with. During the, during the first month of September, the schools will all do a lockdown. During the first quarter, we'll do another one where Ray and I will come on campus and we'll just say, okay, do a lockdown now. So it's unannounced. In other words, we will let parents know that's going to happen during the quarter, but you won't know when. So we want to get a realistic look at how do we react at each school? And it will be at different times at each school. I think part of the, the reason this became an issue, which is good, is this happened right when students were coming to school, which probably is the most difficult time to go into a lockdown or any kind of a safety precaution. So I, it's not going to be a, a total surprise. They're going to know upfront probably from my letter to the team that we're coming. So they'll get an awareness of this, but it is going to be unannounced. So we can get an honest appraisal of how we're doing.
There's not concerns about a panic among the students and then the, the texting and the families are getting messages from students.
I think we've got to practice a meeting. I don't think there's anything more important. So I do feel strongly that's, it's a step. Um, I think the, the only way we can really ease the panic and there probably will be some panic, to be perfectly frank, is to let them know that it is going to happen during a certain time period and why.
Good.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, I share that concern as well. Um, is there a way to let them know when the drill begins that it's, that it's a drill? Or does that?
It says drill.
It says drill. Okay, so it, it won't, so the kid will know.
The drill, the incident that you saw, let me just get clarified, thank you. The incident that happened um, was user error. Cause you, you press it three times. If there's a issue that our security team can go to immediately and help with, like for example, a medical episode, and that's what this was. And it was this fairly serious medical episode. So the person pushed it more and I understand that that could happen. They were concerned for the person that had the issue, but every one of our drills, they do say drill lockdown. If it's the real deal, it's a click and it's a lockdown and it's a different drill. So when we come in, it will say lockdown drill. Our principals, I mean, they're nodding their heads. They've been amazing about this. I mean, there was two or three today, they practiced this all the time. So I think we're doing the best we can, but I'm, I'm not glad that what happened, happened, but it's always good for us to practice more.
Yeah, and just my concern is just to make sure the students know that this is not real, but we have to go through the motions. So that that, that makes me feel better.
And that makes it, this is different is it's not going to be announced ahead of time. Hey, we're having a drill today at nine o'clock. But when it happens, it will say drill.
That's more realistic and.
Um, I had the opportunity as a member of the P T O to be at one of the drills at Vine Street School and I will tell you that the very first thing you hear is a very calming voice say, this is a test. Like it's one of the, like this is the test type of systems. Um, and it says it multiple times, I believe. Um, I heard it more than one time throughout the duration of it. Um, it's not going to make it any less jarring for every student. Um, and I, as much as everyone probably in this room can't stand the fact that we have to be doing these, um, but it is good in, in the way that the students start to get used to for what it's going to feel like if it ever came to that point. And I appreciate um, Superintendent Tager, your thorough response to the comments from the students, staff and parents um, from that meeting. And I think that we have some great steps forward and some great best practices here. And it's again, jarring but important. Um, so it'll be interesting to see how it plays out. I am also concerned, right? Any student who feels distressed at it, um, is going to feel distressed. Unfortunately, my student felt more panicked by the fire alarm when it went off, because that is actually louder and more jarring um, to him than anything else. So I'll just give that as an example.
Um, and I'm just wondering, you know, um, I'm very interested in what the students have to say. And we have a student committee representative. Um, and I'm wondering if Luke can sort of set a liaison between, you know, the students and the committee and that, and give us a visa. I don't know if we could do that.
I think when, when he does his um, communication each meeting, if you want to talk about security from time to time, that'd be good. Yeah.
So at least that alleviates that concern, especially some student representatives. Do we have any representatives just towards, towards the end of the school year?
So um, I had the opportunity to attend the U T C meeting where at the same time, students were getting pinned for having um, achieved their end of the year goals and gotten at their certification needs. Some great updates from U T C for the fall. They are, all of their programs are full and all of their programs are waitlisted. So the, the programming there has grown probably exponentially over the next few years. And as other members who sit on that board know, they are looking at what they need to do in terms of creating more space and expanding the building and what that looks like. Some really exciting things that are happening, not for this coming year, but for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year that we um, discussed at the last meeting. Um, we approved a third satellite uh, exploratory program for Bangor High School and for Central High School. Um, and then what we found as a group really exciting um, is that as a board, we approved the Educational Teaching Teacher Preparation Program um, to be in partnership with PrEP and to kind of help in, improve or increase the narrative around special education and other ed tech positions and other ways to really promote education um, to the next generation of teachers, starting at a younger age, so that we can bring them through the colleges um, and really have our next generation of teachers ready to go. So there's a lot of positive conversations about that happening at U T C. And I think that that will be exciting. Um, if any other, I know that, well, I was the one, I think it was the only one there for this one, but if you want to add on.
Yeah. Um, I had an opportunity to meet with um, Director Peterson and David Walker uh, a few weeks ago. And David Walker is a former superintendent, R S U thirty-four, and he's the acting, he's the interim director of PrEP. Um, we had a great conversation and, and I believe U T C is very interested in becoming a part of the Penobscot River Educational Partnership, which offers professional development to many schools. Uh, and also is a, a, you know, a major lead on the March eighth or the, the March seventeenth, um, Professional Development Day as well. So I, I see good things for, for U T C in that partnership.
Um, member Sword.
I was not able to attend the meeting as I was not able to come here the last time either. Um, but it does my heart good. For nine years, I have watched U T C grow from three hundred and ninety students in two thousand and fourteen now to maximum capacity with waitlists. It tells us as a society that the jobs and training that the kids are learning out there are as important a part of public education as academics. And actually, U T C is about sixty, forty with academics. So please never think that U T C is not an academic program. It is just as much as the rest of our programs. So as I say, in my last year here on the committee and at U T C, it does my heart good to see the value. And Mr. Bannon can remember me going, yeah, U T C, I'm always very enthusiastic. I have been hands-on. So maybe now we can look at maybe something more important for another side of education that has been long lost, and that would be to deal with home economics. You ask a high school senior or girl to prepare a meal? Duh, let's go to McDonald's. So that's another aspect to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, member, who, who's a blonde, do you have a student committee member update?
I do. And just before uh, we begin with the standard committee update I have, I do want to say I definitely share one hundred percent my peers' concerns regarding school security. And I want to thank Mr. Superintendent Tager for all of his work in involving students in that affair. I think that's really important. And if, if setting up a system where I work with some of the students who've expressed their concerns is going to be a helpful tool in resolving this, I'm one hundred percent open to that and I'm happy to look into that. So I just have a few items left for the final student representative report for this year. I'm not going to have a whole lot to report on in the next couple of months. So I want to thank the committee for their understanding of my situation. I can sit back here and just be silent if you want for the next couple of months, but I'm happy to do that. Uh, as of today, school is officially out. So Bangor High School students finished up their final exams today. And I want to congratulate all of our students and faculties who making it here. I know that most of us, including myself, are half asleep, ready to get home and be out of school. So congratulations on making it. And this Sunday, two hundred forty-eight members of the class of twenty twenty-three graduated at the Cross Insurance Center, including some family members of our committee members here today. So congratulations to all of our students who've worked really hard to accomplish this and we wish them best of luck in the future. And next week, from June nineteenth to twenty-third, uh, the R T C program is going to be headed to Gilead for the twenty twenty-three Cadet Leadership Challenge, which is a five-day training exercise we do with schools from, or excuse me, R T C programs from Old Town, Herman, Newport. And we go down, we do adventure training, rappelling, canoeing. Uh, and it's a really great opportunity to interact with students from outside the school department and really learn some skills that are valuable to. Yeah. So, thank you.
We hope you have a great summer. Okay, on to information items. We have several important dates. Tomorrow, Wednesday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, we have our end-of-year recognition at Bangor High School at seven forty-five in the morning. Wednesday, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, we have our joint workshop session with City Council, five P M. Uh, at Bangor High School. And then right after that, on Wednesday, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, we have our regular meeting, seven P M. Here in Council Chambers. Wednesday, um, July twelfth, twenty twenty-three, we have another regular meeting, seven P M. Council Chambers. And then Wednesday, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, we have another regular meeting, seven P M. Council Chambers. And final questions or and or comments from the committee. Member Mundell.
Yeah, I just wanted to commend everyone who was involved in graduation on Sunday. Um, it was, it went incredibly smoothly, I thought, and um, it wasn't too long, which I think is, is really saying something, although I'm, I was a parent, so I might be a little bit biased. Um, but anyway, it, I want to commend um, Dr. Butler, Ms. Hopkins and Mr. Hutchins um, for all the work that they did to put that event together. It was just um, you know, very well-run. And um, Judy Maholic, did I say her name right? For all the photographs, which are just fantastic. And if you go to her website, um, you can see all the photographs. I think there are like twelve hundred of them from the event. So if you didn't get a chance to see it, um, you can, you can see it through those photographs. And so I just wanted to thank everybody and it was a great event.
And I wanted to also echo those sentiments. Congratulations to all of our graduating seniors, their, their parents, their families, their loved ones, um, all the faculty, staff. Um, all the faculty staff uh, for getting them to that point. Uh, Superintendent Tager and Principal Butler and everyone involved. It was wonderful. It's always a joy. This is my second year to be up there on stage and it's always a lot of fun. I, I thoroughly enjoy it. Um, so congratulations to everyone. Congratulations to you all on this wonderful school year and thank you all for your hard work. And um, any other comments or questions? No, seeing none. Adjournment, can I get a motion, please? So moved. All in favor.
Seven, oh, thanks.
Thank you. And good night.